Testing, one, two. Just push this in, so now I am actually recording on the English channel. Anyone that's sitting in the room that has an earphone for translation is hearing me on the English channel. Anyone that's sitting in the room that has an earphone for translation is hearing me on the English channel.
...
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to come into the circle. Roger is going to take a picture before the council meeting starts. This is Wear Pink Day and councillor Hubley has organised this with Roger being here for Anti-Bullying Day. So we'll start the meeting in just a moment. Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seats. We'll start the meeting in just a moment. Au revoir, monsieur La Guinot dans une minute. Merci. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue à la council.
Good morning. Welcome to the city council.
For those who are able to, would you please stand for prayer and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem? Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. I'd ask members to stand for a moment of silence in memory of Alain Bissonnet, who was a city employee who sadly was killed while performing his duties at the Peter P. Clarke Centre on Friday. Our sympathies go out to Alain's family, friends and co-workers at this difficult time. Merci. Thank you. It's now my pleasure to ask councillor Monnette to introduce our guest who is going to sing the national anthem. Conseilier, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, I am honoured to introduce Katie Grateau. Monsieur Mayor et collègue, centre d'un honneur pour moi de vous présenter Katie Grateau.
It's an honour for me to introduce Katie Grateau.
From Wilfrid Laurier and Edward Onealings. She was also a member of the community singers, Cumberland Community Singers. She is auditioning at the movement for the Ottawa University Programme in music to steady voice. Katie est une 12e grade student at Wilfrid Laurier High School. She's auditioning for the music programme at the University of Ottawa in order to steady voice. Her school upcoming musicals this spring called Once Upon a Mattress, as well as being the understudy of a main female role. She was also studying in grade nine in piano and plays as backup pianist at Queenswood United Church.
She has a lot of talent and she's one of the few of her generation that has perfect pitch.
The few young voices who has a perfect pitch. Mr. Mayor, I present you. Je vous présente Katie Grateau.
Well, thank you very much, Katie. That was terrific. And thank you councillor Monnette. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Chris Taylor to the podium for this meeting's Mayor's City Builder Award, along with his councillor, Rick Shirelli from College Ward. If councillor Shirelli could come as well. Welcome. Welcome councillor. It was great to hear Chris. Some of you may have heard he was featured on CBC Radio this morning. It was a great interview, Chris, and thank you for being with us today. In today's digital age, staying current with developing technology can seem like an insurmountable task to many. As technology becomes increasingly integrated into our personal and professional lives, staying current and up to date with digital applications becomes all the more important.
As technology becomes increasingly integrated into our personal and professional lives, staying current and up to date with digital applications becomes all the more important.
The work Mr. Taylor does with the Ottawa PC Users Group is so important. As a 30-year member and acting president for almost 15 years, Chris's leadership has been vital to the success of this not-for-profit group whose philosophy is users teaching users. The group convenes regular presentations where guest speakers share their expertise on a variety of technology-related topics. Additionally, through the Ottawa Public Library's Communities Event Programme, free presentations on a wide variety of technological topics are held at library branches across the city. The group, the Users Group, became involved with the Ottawa Public Library in 2008, and in that time they have held a total of 220 presentations on a wide range of topics, including protecting your computer, how the internet works and doesn't work, basic photo editing, and how to buy a PC. Impressively, of the 222-hour classes that have been held, Mr. Taylor has taught 202 of them on his own with no plans of slowing down.
Impressively, of the 222-hour classes that have been held, Mr. Taylor has taught 202 of them with no plans of slowing down.
These classes are a vital contribution to our community, providing expertise to those that may not have had the opportunity to learn or need to advance their skills with technology. Mr. Taylor's commitment to the Users Group and our city allows for easy access to skill development that may mean the difference between becoming employable or not for many in our community. Thank you for providing this essential service to our city and for these and many other reasons. I'm proud to present you with this council meeting's Mayor's City Builder Award. We congratulate you and thank you for a job well done.
Thank you to the mayor and council for this great honour. I'd not be standing here today if it were not for a lot of other dedicated people who do such wonderful work. My fellow and former board members and others in the Ottawa PC User Group who work tirelessly and freely to share their information and computer knowledge with others, as well the community events coordinators throughout the Ottawa Public Library system who do such great work to bring more than just books to the citizens of our great city. They've always gone out of their way to make it really easy for us in the Ottawa PC User Group to put on these presentations. A colleague once told me that if I was paid for all of the volunteer work that I do and the sharing, I'd be a millionaire. But I think if I had to pay for the knowledge others have freely shared with me, as well as the enjoyment that I've had sharing my knowledge with others, I'd be flat broke. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. It gives me great pleasure to ask councillor Hubley to come forward, as well as city manager Kent Kirkpatrick, for the presentation of the city's 2014 Diversity and Inclusion Awards.
It gives me great pleasure this morning with Helen Hubley and the city manager Kent Kirkpatrick for the presentation of the city's 2015 Diversity Inclusion Award.
...here today, many of whom are with us here today from this year's awards. These annual awards recognise exceptional work of city employees who demonstrate a strong commitment to making our city a better place for everyone. The Diversity Inclusion Awards recognise individuals and teams within the corporation who make outstanding contributions to promote diversity and inclusion for employees and for residents. We are committed to removing barriers and creating equal opportunity for all.
We are committed to removing barriers and creating equal opportunities for everyone.
It is important that people feel safe, valued and respected in our government and in our city regardless of physical ability or disability or race or religion, age, language or sexual orientation. We're continually looking for ways to improve services, accessibility and our business practices to better respond to and reflect our community's diversity. We're also dedicated to attracting and retaining a workforce that is diverse and representative of the population that we serve. Nominees here today have distinguished themselves in a number of ways and are being recognised for initiatives that foster a culture of respect and equity in the workplace. I'm very proud of these accomplishments in promoting these values and embracing different views and perspectives. And I truly appreciate the opportunity to present these awards with my colleague councillor Hubley and to acknowledge the significant achievements we continue to make in promoting diversity and inclusion. As an employer, we are committed to ensuring that each staff member has a strong sense of belonging. That commitment is also helping us to extend and improve the services we provide to all residents. I extend a very heartfelt thanks to the award recipients today and to all of the nominees.
I extend a very heartfelt thanks to the award recipients today and to all of the nominees.
...to invite councillor Hubley and city manager Kent Kirkpatrick to say a few words before we present the awards in the individual and team categories.
Thank you very much, Mayor Watson. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
...here today to announce the recipients of the city's annual Diversity and Inclusion Awards.
This is the perfect opportunity to recognise the contributions of some of the many exceptional people here at the city.
...committed to removing barriers and creating equal opportunities for everyone. And recently here at the city of Ottawa, we established a Diversity and Inclusion Management Working Group to provide interdepartmental leadership and to advance corporate and departmental strategies to promote diversity and inclusion. And I'm very proud to say that I chair this committee. The committee is comprised of departmental management representatives who demonstrate leadership, knowledge and passion for advancing the diversity agenda and promoting inclusion and equity at the city of Ottawa. Through this committee, we have an opportunity to further strengthen the link between diversity, ongoing operations and service excellence, and to establish accountability at all levels of the organisation and strengthen leadership support. It is important to me that the city is actively working to further support all staff in advancing diversity and inclusion. Today's award ceremony provides an opportunity to acknowledge and thank the exceptional individuals and teams who are promoting inclusion and diversity within the city and for our residents.
Today's awards ceremony provides an opportunity to acknowledge and thank the exceptional individuals and teams who are promoting inclusion and diversity within the city.
...and inclusion. And this is evident in the impressive award nominations that were submitted this year. These employees have shown true dedication to ensuring inclusivity and diversity at the city of Ottawa and within our workforce. The submissions were all very strong and all nominees have made significant contributions in this regard. They relate to a variety of needs and a wide range of initiatives and all originate from a commitment to breaking down barriers in our organisation. For the first time, this year's winners in both categories will receive a specially designed pin that incorporates the city's logo with an image representing diversity, inclusion and unity. This morning, we'll begin by announcing the winner of the 2014 Diversity and Inclusion Award in the individual category. There are eight nominations received in this category and nominees represent diverse programmes and apartments across the city. Their contributions are very wide-ranging. This year's nominees are Anne Goodchild, Clara Friere, Greg Davis, Joanne Moore, Mark Villeneuve, Mark Nat Scott, Natalie Zaniga, Tracy Leveque. And before we announce this year's winner, I would invite all nominees from the individual category to please stand and would ask that everyone here today join me in recognising their outstanding contributions with a round of applause. If you could please stand. I'd like to begin with two notable honourable mentions in this category, the individual category. The first is Joanne Moore from Infrastructure Services, who was nominated for her efforts to increase awareness of the accessibility issues on construction sites throughout the city. As a result of Joanne's hard work, commitment and leadership, the level of knowledge and awareness of accessibility issues on construction sites has increased significantly among key stakeholders. Thank you, Joanne, and congratulations. The second honourable mention goes to Greg Davis from Transit Services. And Greg is nominated for her leadership in fostering a learning environment within the Transit Services Department that is sensitive to the various training needs of employees. Greg has promoted a culture of awareness and respect and has inspired her fellow trainers to use the equity and inclusion lens when developing training material, facilitating set sessions, providing coaching, and delivering training and testing procedures. Thank you very, very much, Greg. Congratulations. And now the winner of the 2014 Diversity and Inclusion Award goes to Anne Goodchild. Please come on down, Anne, while I say a few words about you. Anne is recognised for her dedication to finding innovative ways to advance opportunities for physical activity and sport within Ottawa's diverse communities. Anne's extensive and dedicated efforts have expanded the city's ability to provide a variety of inclusive and accessible recreational services to residents. Congratulations, Anne, and thank you for your great, great work.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Moving to the team category, the 2014 nominees are the 2014 Bus Operator Recruitment Campaign Team, the Bylaw and Regulatory Services (BLRS) Inclusion Team, the Elections Office Management Team, the International Day of Pink Team, the Media Lexi Software Team, and the Snow Angel Recognition Programme. I'd like to ask all team nominees to please stand, and I invite everyone here today again to join me in a round of applause and appreciation of their tremendous contributions. We have one honourable mention in the team category that goes to the Snow Angel Recognition Programme, composed of team members Paul McCann and Leslie Vanqueef from Public Works. This is a fantastic programme, and Paul and Leslie are nominated for their work in implementing and promoting the city's Snow Angel Recognition Programme, which recognises residents who have volunteered to help someone who is elderly or has a disability by clearing snow or ice from their property in order to improve their accessibility during the winter. Thank you very much for your initiative in creating this important programme. And now the winner of the 2014 Diversity and Inclusion Award in the team category is the Bylaw and Regulatory Services Inclusion Team, consisting of the following members, and please come down. Emily Baxter, Tara LaFleur, David James Martin, Patricia Mullen, Sabrina Pizien, Lorna Pivier, Amanda Fenua, Andrew Sangio, Tyler Tanner, and Jennifer Thirkelson. The team is recognised for developing, coordinating, and promoting diversity and inclusion initiatives within the Bylaw and Regulatory Services Branch, and team members have worked collaboratively to coordinate and participate in various events and activities that promote diversity and inclusion, including Women in Uniform, Gay Pride, Transgender Day of Remembrance, Day of Pink, Employee Respectful Workplace Training, as well as numerous community outreach and recruitment sessions. They have all shown a strong commitment to identifying innovative ways by which to engage staff and members of the community that have produced results. Thank you all for your great work, and congratulations once again. Thank you very much. And I would like to express my sincere thanks to each of you for a job very, very well done, and in recognition of this important acknowledgement from your peers and from council here today. We have certificates for each nominee that can be picked up right outside of the council chambers. Thank you again very, very much, and have a great day.
I should point out to members of council, our new chief, fire chief, is with us today, and we want to congratulate Jerry Pinjatori. And it's also great to see our former chief, John DeHooch, with us here for the award ceremony. Thank you, Chief DeHooch, for being here. And I should point out, I hope he's still in the room, Paul McCann, as many of you know, has been the creative genius behind the, there he is there, cleaning the capital and anti-graffiti programmes. We call him Mr. Clean. He retires, I think, later this week. So, Paul, thank you for your years of service to the city of Ottawa. Appreciate it. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Concierge Manette.
Yes, sir.
Councillor Midic.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshantiiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
Si.
Councillor Newspom.
Present.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Si.
Concierge Cutier.
Present.
Concierge Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
The coronation of Mr. Lamar.
Confirmation of minutes, the regular meeting of the 11th of February 2015, carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflits d'intérêts, y compris ceux d'écoulant des réunions antérieures, suivant. Communications as presented, regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion pour ta présentation de rapports, concierge Fleury, seconded by councillor Tierney, please.
Thank you that the Ottawa Police Services Board report one, Community and Protective Services Committee report one, Environment Committee report one, Planning Committee report two A, and Transit Commission report one, be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Planning Committee report three, subsection 29.3, because of the urgency of the item contained in the report. Thank you.
Carried. Reports, Ottawa Police Services Board, report number one, rapport numéro un de la Commission de Service Policier, Police Service Board Activity, Training, and Performance, 2014 Annual Report, Rapport Annuel 2014, received. Committee reports, Community and Protective Services Committee report number one, Community and Protective Services Committee meeting schedule, calendrier des réunions des comités de services communautaires et de protection, carried. Environment Committee report number one, Environment Committee meeting schedule, carried.
Descent.
Descent by councillors Leeper and McKenney. Update on Plasko Long-Term Waste Conversion Agreement, mise à jour sur l'entente de transformation des déchets à long terme conclu avec Plasko, carried. Item number five, Environment Committee Terms of Reference, mandats commis de l'environnement, councillor Wilkinson has direction to staff. I believe councillor Chernoshenko is aware of this, so councillor Wilkinson, please.
Yes, just to be brief, Mr. Chair, when they did the governance and things, and the changes were made, one of the things that is sort of lost between it is how we deal with wildlife, and I have a lot of it in and near my ward, so I have quite a lot of interest in that, and had people coming to me. So I've spoken to the staff about it, and they're willing to take a look at that and come back when we do the mid-governance review. So the direction to staff would be that staff be directed to include a proposal to add oversight of wildlife issues to the mandated Environment Committee, to the consultations for the 2014-2018 midterm governance review. So that's just a direction.
So councillor Chernoshenko, you're the chair of the committee, you're comfortable with that direction?
I am comfortable with that direction. Our main objective is to see if there are any aspects of wildlife protection that fall through the cracks, that no committee has carriage over, and whether there are any aspects of how we, mandates now, that may be due for correction, but I believe that taking the time to do that rather than on the floor here today made more sense.
Okay, so that is the direction to staff. Thank you councillor Wilkinson. On the Environment Committee Terms of Reference, carried.
Carried.
Planning Committee report number two A, rapport numéro deux A, de commité de Romainisme, Rideau Arts Precinct Public Realm Plan, plan de domaine public de la rue Rideau et du secteur de la cour des eaux, carried.
Can I comment in this room?
Item number seven, revised bylaw number 2009-95 and utilisation of cash and little parkland funds policy to implement the Preston Carling District Secondary Plan, carried. Item number eight, zoning bylaw 845 Carling, carried. Item number nine, zoning bylaw amendment 566 Hillsun Avenue and 148 Clare Street, carried, dissent by councillors Newspom and Leeper. Item number 10, licence of occupation for Stormwater Pond Number Four Maple Grove Facility lands, permis d'occupation pour le bassin de gestion des eaux plus vial cap installation de Maple Grove, carried. Item number, next item is Transit Commission report number one, Transit Commission meeting schedule, carried.
Descent, please.
Descent by Leeper, McKenney, and Newspom. Revisions to boundary of urban transit area for 2015, revision de limite de secteur de transport commun urbain pour 2015, carried. Bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No. Bulk consent as presented, carried. So we're back to item number six, Rideau Arts Precinct Public Realm Plan, plan de domaine public de la rue Rideau. Councillor Brockington asks that this be held. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll keep my comments brief. I did speak about this at committee, and I have spoken to the local councillor, councillor Fleury, on this item. What I'm concerned about, Mr. Mayor, is not the motion before us. I do support the plan for Rideau Street and the area, and think this is a very good plan. But my comments really pertain to the ongoing attention that I believe Rideau Street requires. Rideau Street certainly has a long history in this city and has gone through a significant number of evolutions, both good, bad, and ugly, let's be frank. What I see before us, though, is very promising, and I certainly endorse the vision for the Rideau Street area. My concerns, though, really go with respect to the attention that should be given to Rideau Street once this development has gone forward. And if members of council come downtown and take a walk on Rideau, you'll probably appreciate that there's a lot of good things about the street, and certainly there are some things about Rideau Street that should be addressed. And I think that no matter how much time, effort, and resources we pour into Rideau Street with respect to this proposal before us, those issues that concern me are still going to be there. And so some ideas that I've had, that I've discussed with the local councillor, and perhaps he can pursue with the Rideau Street BIA, are those types of things, where in some cities they have on-street ambassadors who help tourists or folks who might not live in the area, but who also help address some of the issues, whether it be people who are begging on the street, litter, garbage, graffiti, things that can be called in right away. Because I don't think there are a lot of people in Ottawa who don't live downtown that say, "I want to go to Rideau Street this weekend. I want to walk Rideau Street and see what there is to offer." And it should be, because I think part of the redevelopment and the money that we're going to be putting into Rideau Street should be a draw, not just for tourists but from residents of Ottawa. And my concern, as I've said at the beginning, is the redevelopment, I'm on board with that. I think it's a good thing for this street, but it may not address and fix the ongoing chronic issues that that street faces. And so I wanted to pull that today and just address that, that even though we might endorse the vision and the plan for that street, I still think there's work that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Fleury, s'il plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked to the committee quite a bit about this, but just a reminder to say that this plan is very welcome by the community, and the items raised by my colleagues are justifiable. It's one of the most important streets of Ottawa, and we must pay a special attention to it in terms of capital investments and daily operations.
Committee, but really wanted to give maybe a summary of the investment here is that a lot of things are happening in that area privately and publicly in terms of city investments with Arts Court, Light Rail, and privately with the Rideau Centre, and that the area needed a special look at and revision, especially leading up to 2017 along Rideau Street. And it is an opportunity for us to formalise the investment and leverage the investments in the zone, but it's also a good reflection from my colleague regarding the day-to-day operations on the street and the types of businesses that are desired on that main corridor. Thank you.
Merci, concierge, merci à notre personnel et aussi à les...
Thank you councillor, thank you to the staff and the private sector for their contribution.
The report, carried, adopté, merci. Motion to adopt reports, motion pour ta adoption de rapport, concierge Fleury, s'il plaît, and concierge Tierney.
That Ottawa Police Services Board report one, Community and Protective Services Committee report one, Environment Committee report one, Planning Committee report two A and three, and Transit Commission report one be received and adopted as amended.
Adopté, carried. Motions of which notice have been previously given, motion dont avait été donné entièrement, councillor Deans, seconded by councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do want to take a moment to speak about this. This is the motion to declare March 8, 2015, to be International Women's Day in the city of Ottawa, and I want to take a moment just to talk about women's equality. The United Nations has given this year's International Women's Day the theme of equality for women is progress for all. This theme is designed to showcase how gender equality is essential for bolstering economic and social development around the world and right here at home. And I must say, I was impressed watching the Academy Awards on Sunday night, that Patricia Arquette, who had her moment in the limelight because she won the Best Supporting Actress Award, took the time to champion pay equity for women in America, and I think that was a very worthy cause. From a political perspective, there is no doubt, in order to make the decisions that create growth and encourage progress, the voices of women must be represented and documented. The best way for this to happen is for women to be represented in government. The United Nations defines 30% as the minimal percentage of women required for government to be able to reflect women's concerns. Right here at our own council table, we saw a decline in the representation of women during the last election, and Ottawa now sits below the national average with just 17% representation at this table. Sunday, March 8, is absolutely a day about reflecting on the significant gains that women have made to improve equal rights, but it's also about acknowledging the need to continue to make those sustainable changes and encouraging everyone to address the barriers that still exist today. I encourage council to recognise this day and celebrate those who continue to strive for equality and for excellence for women. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Wilkinson, please. Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo a little bit of what's said, I don't want to repeat anything, but one of the things I think as members of council, male and female, that is really important to do is to encourage women. I have just gone through, in fact, I'm continuing with a group of young women through with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities called the Head Start Program. And what they were doing was identifying what were the barriers that young women today feel are there and the interest in being involved in politics. And I can tell you, it's very, very, very low. The interest is not there, they don't want to be involved, they don't like what happens and things. And so we've used it and that group of sixteen young women have actually improved their leadership scholarship levels a lot by doing this. And if you encourage women and give them the leadership training, there are a lot of very, very smart women out there that could be doing a lot more for community, not just in politics but in other leadership positions. And I think it beholds all of us to think about that on International Women's Day and to in fact do something in your community with the women that you know there, with the girls in high school and the university that you may come across and in your offices. Many of you have women in your offices, encourage them all to use their skills because they have lots of them.
Thank you very much councillor. On the motion?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. The next item, motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Councillor Elchantiri has a motion that requires suspension of procedure because of the timing of the situation. It will be March eighteenth before our next council meeting, March twenty-fifth. On suspension of the rules?
Carried.
Carried. I should before I ask councillor Elchantiri, let colleagues know that he was successfully elected to the Board of Directors of Roma, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association, at this week's annual general meeting. So congratulations councillor Elchantiri. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleague. This item on the Mississippi Valley Conservation, as councillor works and myself, we both it on that organization and the conservation authority. In the past, we had Ms. Mason as a reserve member, but since the review of the census and we believe we are allowed five member on the MVCA Board of Directors, so therefore we're asking your support to appoint Janet Mason for the additional seat on the MVCA. So instead of being reserve member, she will be a full member and we're asking your support today so she can be prepared for the next meeting of MVCA, which is March eighteen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you councillor. On the motion?
Carried.
Adopté, merci. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? No. Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor Newsbaum, please. Seconded by councillor McKenney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a motion to essentially deal with the expanded mandate of the Bill Heritage Subcommittee, which was approved by council at the December third or fourth meeting, dealing with the governance report. And the preamble to this is that we are having a retreat next week where we'll be dealing with some of the process issues that have arisen from the governance report. Initially, the governance report spoke about an April first deadline, at which time the Bill Heritage Subcommittee would be dealing with these additional responsibilities, but given that the committee has not had a chance to discuss the process through which it would do this, we're asking through this motion to defer the beginning of this additional responsibility start time from April first to July first.
Okay. Thank you. So that will be dealt with at our next meeting. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meetings? No. Notice of intent from the city auditor, avis de l'intention de vérificateur de la ville. Notice of intent from the city auditor to table the twelfth, table at the twelfth of March meeting of the Audit Committee under councillor Hubley's leadership, so we have to let people know that that's taking place. Motion to introduce bylaws, councillor Fleury and Tierney, please.
Merci, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Bylaw, please councillor Fleury.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the twenty-fifth of February, 2015.
Carried, adopté. Inquiries, I have one written inquiry from councillor Fleury, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Under its current bylaws to regulate distracting animated electronic signage inside of a window where the message is pointed towards the outside. If not, what measures can the city take to regulate this type of signage? These signs can be very distracting to pedestrians, cyclists and drivers and have an adverse impact on the quality of life of residents and the livability of our main streets.
Thank you. To remind members of council, our next meeting is a special council meeting on the eleventh of March and the Clerk's Office has asked me to remind you that if you do have any specific motions with respect to the budget, they be sent in as quickly as possible so that staff have time to respond and then a page number to the budget, both adding and where you're taking, be included in the motion so that they can verify that with the city treasurer. Adjournment, councillor Fleury and Tierney, please.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of twenty-fifth of February, 2015 be adjourned. Merci. Merci.